It is 6:30 PM and I call this meeting to order. Please stand and we will recite the Pledge of Allegiance. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Winona City Council and is being held via conference call pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen D point zero two one. In response to the COVID nineteen emergency, let me please remind those who are on the conference call line, please mute your phones until you're asked to speak. Also, please identify yourself before you speak. As required by the statute, all votes will be conducted by roll call so each member's vote on each issue can be identified and recorded. Also, if at any time a council member is not able to hear the discussion or one another, please interrupt me immediately to indicate so. Also, just a reminder to state your name before you speak so you're easily identified. Tonight I have just a couple of comments. Obviously, this past week we have had some phenomenal weather. And I just want to let everybody know that our natural surface trails, Blesse Side Park, otherwise known as the Holzinger Trails, as well as the Sugarloaf Trail are now open. That being said, we're gonna have rain the rest of the week. So I will use the very common moniker known down in Park Rack. If you're leaving a track, please turn back. That's bike tire, foot, dog, dog paw, I don't care what it is. If you're leaving an impression in those natural surface trails, give it a little time to dry, give it a day or two, and that'll really help us when we're working on the maintenance of those trails. Other than that, get outside. Vaccinations are going extremely well throughout the county. City staff, specifically our firefighters, have been working a lot of hours to get people vaccinated as quickly as possible. There are, I believe, open vaccination clinics for next week, and there will be more upcoming, so please be aware of that. And if you are inclined to get a vaccination, please jump onboard with that if you, if possible. At the threat of potentially sounding like Governor Walz, I will ask us to all still be vigilant. We are seeing low infection rates right now, but at the same time, we want to make sure that we're getting as many people vaccinated and staying ahead of these variants. So I think it's real important that we still continue to follow all the mask orders as well as physical distancing. A lot of people have been having questions regarding what they can do once they're vaccinated. We just put a new tab on our COVID nineteen vaccination page on the city of Winona site. It is called "I'm Vaccinated, Now What?" And so it's got a nice little frequently asked question section that will be able to guide you in that direction. As well as a lot of links that can give you information. And that's all I got for tonight. City Manager Steve Sarbi, do you have anything tonight?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to point out, I think most council, the community knows that we had a fire at the Brookdale Assistant Care Center. And while the firefighters were right there on the spot to get the fire out, we needed to do something with the residents. And so they did the great job that they normally do, but we needed to find a spot, put them, the residents and the hospital. Came through and said they could take them all. That was great. We really appreciate them doing that. But also want to thank the central garage employees who grabbed buses and did the job of hauling the residents over to the hospital. So a little crisis in the middle of a crisis and was handled quite well. We hope they get that building back up and open as soon as possible. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. I will now ask the city clerk to take roll call. Members of city council who are either present in the council chambers or participating by conference call, please indicate your presence by stating here as the city clerk calls your name.
Mayor Scott Sherman.
Here.
Councilman Young.
Here.
Mueller.
Here.
Alexander.
Here.
Ayden.
Here.
Borzakowski.
Here.
Rapinski.
Here.
I would like to remind everyone that the public is not allowed to speak during these agenda items unless you have a request before the council, and I have given you permission to speak. Also, a reminder to the council that a roll call vote will be taken on each motion.
Under the petitions, requests, and communications, item three point one is the appointments to the Building and Fire Code Board of Appeals. The reappointment of Brian Bulow and Mike Hanson, and the appointment of Randy Knudsen, Jacob Nickley, and Larry Strange.
George moves to approve those appointments.
Aaron would second that. We have a motion by George, a second by Aaron. Any discussion?
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
These three appointments of Randy, Jacob, and Larry are very, very good appointments, and they join two experienced people on this committee as well, too. All of our committees have good appointments, and this is just an example of excellent appointments again tonight.
Thank you, George. Any other discussion? I'd just like to say quick that these appointments are not always easy. This board of appeals specifically, excuse me. They meet rarely, but it's an extremely important board. So thank you to anyone who's been serving on a commission or a board for us. So thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point two is to renew the liquor permit for the Winona tour boat.
George moves to approve the application for the liquor permit.
Eileen will second.
We've got a motion by George, a second by Eileen. Any discussion? I believe.
I'll abstain from that, Mayor.
Aaron will be abstaining from this vote. Any discussion items? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
And Rapinski will abstain.
Motion passes.
Item three point three is the Levy Park Dock Agreement with Winona State.
George moves to approve the dock agreement with Winona State.
Eileen will second.
I have a motion from George, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point four is a request for drive-in movie series.
The request.
Move the request.
Okay, we'll take the motion from Pam and a second from George. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point five is the Winona Parks Ash Tree Planning.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Make a motion to approve the fundraising campaign.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? And I believe we have Howard Krueger on the call tonight.
Very good. Could we hear from Howard?
Yeah, Howard, are you available? Would you care to speak for a moment?
Yes, I'm here.
Howard, Councilman Rapinski here. I have a quick question for you. Are we, is this with the thought of prolonging the life of the ash trees for this new treatment? That I believe was developed from the U of M, where it's some sort of injection process that'll, that'll inject some sort of fungus to prevent this? Is this the idea behind it?
That is one of the ideas, but overall, I spoke with a professor at the University of Minnesota, and he indicated to me within three to five years, they will probably have a commercial application for this fungus that is developing, that he can spray the trees. That will be a one-time application, that the fungus has regenerated itself, that the ash beetle finds intolerable to lay its eggs. Despite that, you know, Winona, when I first moved to town in the seventies, it was a canopy of elm trees. And then for whatever reason, after those died, there was an availability of these ash trees, you know, from under the state forest. And the forester of Winona at the time, because the trees were free, reforested much of the areas of lost elms with nothing but ash. And of course, you know, the beetle is devastating the ash trees as we speak. Even he said that one of the most important things to think about in regards to, you know, your forest planning, whether you're, you know, whether, you know, whether you're on a park or a boulevard is diversification. And I would like to see in working with the forester, and I think he's also attending the meeting today, and he can certainly speak on this issue, about, you know, also keeping some of the ash trees alive, but start replacing ash trees with a larger tree, you know, a three-inch tree that will catch up much quicker than, say, a one-inch tree, to have a diversified forest in the, in the parks and along the boulevards. I already have commitments from individuals for about five or six trees to be planted in Wyndham Park and in Sinclair Park and down in Sobeys Park. If you want to see what a park looks like without the ash trees, you know, go down to Sobeys Park, that tree was, that, that park was deforested of ash, and you can kind of see what it looks like. And of course, it'd be a shame to see Wyndham Park and Sinclair Park and between the boulevard, the boulevards going between the lakes of, you know, diverse of trees, you know, devoid of trees, because if we don't do something, they're all gonna die about the same time.
Thank you, Howard. Anybody else have any questions?
This is Pam. I would like to ask Howard to explain the green ribbons around the trees, the green tape around the trees.
Yeah, last, not this Sunday, Easter Sunday, but the Sunday before, met with a group of concerned individuals about this ash problem. And also, the city forester was there, and we identified ash trees by circling them with a very bright green safety ribbon, you know, that you can buy at Home Depot or Menards. And kind of the plan is, as I've developed, and well, if we get approval tonight, a postcard printed, I was printing about, you know, the ash tree is gonna die, this ash tree will die, it will soon be a stump. If we, if we don't do anything act now, our, our parks will lose hundreds of, of ash trees. And do your part, I've already been approved by the Winona Community Foundation to work through them to raise the money. They've already set up a separate sub-account for the Friends of Winona Parks to, so these, so these donations out of beginning will be tax deductible for the individuals. Our plan is not to spend any money unless we have it in the bank, you know, so funds will only be allocated and spent at the time. And then all, you know, anything that we're gonna do within the parks themselves or where trees get planted, of course, we'll run through both Chad and also with Chris Kramer, the city forester, as far as any plan that we have as far as planting trees or keeping the existing ash trees alive as we diversify our forest population over a period of time. And, you know, and of course, if this, you know, Friends of the Winona Parks goes beyond ash trees someday down the road, of course, we have Friends of the Library. I could see this as a, as a vehicle down the road to potentially helping other projects in regards to our city parks.
Mayor, Michelle Alexander.
Go ahead, Michelle.
Thank you. Mr. Krueger, I was very excited to see this item. I have very fond memories of coming down Broadway with the Dutch elm just spread out across like a canopy that you would drive through, and it would turn colors in the fall, and it was gorgeous. And when those trees came down, it was kind of heartbreaking. I'm a big proponent of diversification of trees, and I'm just so pleased that you and other members of the community are willing to tackle this in partnership with the city and do fundraising. What I'm curious is, if someone wanted to become a donor and they wanted to sponsor a tree, what would that amount be? Like, we're a round number, like, what, what would someone send in, and what would that amount look like? Let's say they wanted to, you know, put a tree.
You know, I, I'm kind of a firm believer in kind of buying locally, possible, provides local jobs. And I know the city park department is quite busy, and, and, you know, I've been dealing with Winona Nursery, and I've donated enough for a tree to be planted in the park across from me, and already we've kind of picked the location out with the forester and a tree type. It's actually gonna be an elm tree that is Dutch tree resistant, and it will go kind of in that location of where the big pine was cut down in that quadrant of that park. And that tree costs about $700, you know, to be planted. In other words, purchased, planted, and the tree is about almost three inches in diameter, so it would, it would take many drunk college students to wreck it.
So, Mr. Krueger, what you're saying is, if someone wanted to do a full tree, it would be 700, but you would gladly take donations of any size to help.
Absolutely. You know, to, to treat these trees, I know it's costly for the city to do it. You know, if, if allowed, we're still working kind of through those details with Chad and the forester. The process of just treating the trees themselves, the cost of the chemicals, where the process of getting a license is relatively inexpensive. You know, and so what few ash trees we do keep alive, let's say we keep alive 60% for a while, and then eventually we're down to 30%, is relatively inexpensive per tree. The large cost, of course, is in labor, you know, and of course, we would rely upon a volunteer force to do that if we are allowed. Both myself and Kent Grover, you know, you know, we both grew up on farms, we know how to handle chemicals, we know how to, you know, the process of treating an ash tree is rather simple, you know, it's, you basically drill holes around the cambrian, around the bottom of the tree, and you put in these applicators, and you draw the chemical out of a bucket. And if you catch it at the right time, you can do 10, 15 trees in a morning. Because it goes rather quickly. Catch it at the wrong time, it takes a lot longer. You know, the ideal time to do it is, you know, in the middle of, middle of to late May, when the tree is actually bringing a lot of nutrients and water up from the ground. And you just do it early in the morning.
Excuse me, this is Pam. Mayor, I have another question.
Go ahead, Pam.
Yes, Howard, do you anticipate being able to start this project this May?
That, that is correct. I've already got commitments, you know, for close to $10,000 to kind of start this project. Several people have indicated they are, they are wanting to plant trees. Winona Nursery is somewhat limited on trees because they're moving, you know, but they do have quite a few trees available to, to be purchased and planted. I know in working with Chris, the forester, he's, he's real good about meeting people out. Maybe there's a location this tree would be planted that the individual who donates it wants it to be kind of in this location. He certainly seemed to be willing to work with, with, with our group as far as that, those kind of details. So literally, if approved, I anticipate trees being planted within a week.
That's excellent. And where should people send their donations if they would like to donate to this?
One, one method would be by check to the Friends of Winona Parks, to the Winona Community Foundation at their address at 111 River Fund, Suite Two, in the East Annex. But we'll also have a Facebook page, you know, through the Winona Foundation. And we'll, we're, we're gonna be placing these cards on the trees that people can go up, and there's a little scan thing. I don't know if you can see this right here, but here's kind of the proof. So these, these will be attached to the ribbons that are around the trees. And then we're also designing a postcard to, you know, do a postcard campaign where people can volunteer and write postcards to people in the neighborhoods to, or drop postcards off at their houses, so individuals can donate. Whether it would be an individual tree or just into the general fund, you know, you know, $700 sometimes is a lot of money for an individual household. But, you know, that, you know, keeping a tree alive is basically $40 to $50, and that's alive for a couple of years. So relatively small donations can keep one ash tree alive while these other diversified trees catch up. Because one bad thing about an ash tree is it's a slow grower, because those ash trees have been there for 40 years, and they're, and they're not as big as, say, if they would have planted a Dutch resistant elm tree or a maple tree at the time.
Mayor George.
Go ahead, George. Yep.
Hi, Howie.
Hi, George.
Had your voicemail here, I think about a week ago, week and a half ago, and I just simply want to say thank you to you for taking this project on with the City Parks Department and Chris Kramer, and you just exemplify again what Winona is about. Individuals who believe in something, step up and go to work on it. And I certainly will support this motion tonight to allow the fundraising.
Well, thank you, George. And, and speaking of older gentlemen like yourself, I learned from some of the past Phil Faiton and, and and the gentlemen that, you know, basically made the park next door to my house very beautiful, and I want to keep it that way.
Thanks for your time.
Any other questions, comments? I'm just gonna say real quick, on public record, I'm throwing a hundred bucks in. So I think that's a good start, and I think.
Thank you.
You know, we're all, we're all concerned about it. We all have banged our heads against the wall in terms of trying to save these trees. And I think this is a good workaround that everybody can feel good about, and it's a great collaboration piece. So thank you again to Howard and everybody that's working with you on that team. I do have one quick question. I've been getting a few people asking, what are they gonna do when they find a green ribbon in their yard blowing down the street? Do we have a more permanent solution than that? Are we?
The green.
Any ideas there?
The green ribbons are temporary.
Okay. The card will be a more temper, more permanent type thing. Okay, great. Thank you. Any other discussion? All right. Thank you again, Howard. We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Item three point six is the West End, West End Skate Park Proposal.
I'm Michelle. I would move approval of this request for fundraising.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion from Michelle and a second from Eileen. Any discussion on this?
Mayor, is Zach on board here tonight somewhere?
I'm here.
Yeah, just here, I guess, what we all have in mind. It sounds pretty good, so.
Great. Would you like any more information about it at, at this moment?
Or is there anything you would like to add that we already have here, or?
Oh, I'm, I'm not sure what you, what you have in front of you, but I could, will say that it is a, the plan is a skate plaza, and skate plazas are designed to look like a city park, kind of like Levy Park, modified slightly to accommodate skateboarding, scooters, inline skating, BMX bikes, and we're also, the plan is also multi-use, with one of the features being a stage that could accommodate music, live performance, and other events that would bring something lively to the, to the west end of Winona.
Mayor, Eileen here.
Go ahead, Eileen.
I, full disclosure, I've been talking with Zach about this because this is just a couple of blocks from my house, and I love that Anthem is in the West Rec Center. It's a great asset for the neighborhood, but I know Zach has looked into our comprehensive plan and that this could possibly fit into that. And I wondered if he might want to talk about that a little bit.
I would, yeah. So the, you know, the location is on the, the east side of, of the block on Fifth Street and High. It's about a 7,000 square foot space, and it would make, you know, what, what we're considering, you know, a west end recreation complex where there's the park, the aquatic center, and the plaza, and then the indoor skate park, which would have year-round skating, all sharing the, the same, the same parking lot. So really bringing a lot to the location, and then, you know, that part of the neighborhood is, is really lacking in, in parks and, and free recreation opportunities.
Great, thank you, Zach. Any other questions for Zach?
I don't have a question. I just have an additional comment that.
Please.
I'm very excited. I hope that Zach is successful in fundraising and, because, because George has got a lot of nice things on his end of town, and I would like if we could have something here, I think that'd be great.
He's been around longer, Eileen. That's why.
Thank you, Eileen.
Zach, I have a quick question for you. This is Mayor Sherman. Have you, do you have at least like a preliminary plan, a fundraising goal that you're shooting for?
Well, this week we're submitting our application to the BK 5K at Grants, and we've partnered with the Winona Community Foundation. And, I mean, obviously, our goal is the entire price tag of, of the project.
Which is how much?
$215,000, which would include all of the features, the stage, the green space, seating, and rain gardens, as well as a mural project on, as the backdrop of the stage.
Have we seen that plan? I don't know that I've seen that yet.
Well, I have, I have the plan. This was the, the first stage is, and I'd be ready to submit that plan.
Okay. All right, very good. Thank you. Any other questions for Zach? Zach, I'm a west-ender. Let's do this, buddy. Okay? All righty. All right. Hearing no more discussion, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilman Young.
Aye.
Mueller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye. Motion passes.
Item five point seven is the Great River Shakespeare Festival Request for the Use of Levy Park from June 4th to August 6th.
George will move to execute the agreement.
Second, Steve Young. We have a motion from George, a second from Steve, I believe. Eileen?
Yes.
To state on this one, or no?
I have to abstain on this one, yes.
Okay, very good.
Mayor, I'd like to make a couple of comments here.
Go ahead.
I've had some citizens ask me, in this rendition of the picture we're looking at, of the information we're giving, the red on the parking lot, that 35, 36 parking spaces, is that for parking for them, or is that gonna be not available for parking? And, and that leads to my question for, for this, Great River Shakespeare Festival, great organization, great for Winona. I've had some citizens concerned with, if it's at the levy, are they gonna be able to still use the levy? What happens with Steamboat Days? That happens from June 6th, 16th through the 20th. You know, having no amplified music, I didn't have a chance to talk to anybody from Island City Brewing. However, they do live music a few nights a week in the summer. How does that affect them? Are they, are they okay with this? Has anyone approached them? I had one question, how come? I had one question. How come they're not doing that Winona State with the new lifted restrictions? Uh, uh, parking comes into play if they're looking at a capacity of, let's say, a full show is two hundred and fifty people. I'm gonna guess that's well over a hundred vehicles. Where are we putting all those vehicles and does that hurt any other businesses downtown from say five thirty to, to nine thirty? And have those businesses been contacted and said, hey, we're thinking of doing this. Here's, here's our thoughts. Here's our plan.
Sure.
Um, I can tell you from a personal note, I have not been contacted. And Lot Nine, which, which most people consider the Godfather's Pizza Parking Lot, is where my customers park.
True.
So I, I'm curious if other businesses have been talked to or spoken to or informed about it.
Chad, do you have something to say on that?
Uh, so mayor and council, um, I guess first question I think I can answer. And then Aaron Young from the Great River Shakespeare Festival probably can answer questions about Island City, et cetera. Uh, we did in the exhibit, uh, use the south side of Lot Number Nine, uh, for this license agreement. Um, that's primarily to allow Shakespeare, when you look in the license agreement, allows them to, if they wanna place some flagging or something to signify to their customer base, this is, this is one location you could park. It also is designated so that they are allowed to, per the agreement and per, per our ordinance to allow portable restrooms. And so their plan is to bring in a trailer, um, for portable restrooms. And so we needed a location to park that. With work that's going on, uh, behind the movie theater parking lot, that's not available to them. And so that is why we're going to, uh, Lot Nine for that service. So there is a component where there will, there is a loss of parking spots because of the portable restrooms. The loss of the other parking stalls, which of course, as you've mentioned, uh, would be primarily performance-based for their parking. Uh, regarding Island City, I think it's probably best maybe that we ask with your approval, Mayor, uh, for Aaron just to relay businesses he's talked to about amplified sound. And then Mayor and Council, I can certainly come back and talk about effective Steamboat Days and other conflicts that we have with Levy Park during the summer.
Very good. Uh, Aaron Young, Director, uh, Executive Director of the Great River Shakespeare Festival is on with us. Aaron, would you like to speak to those questions and those points?
Absolutely. Thank you for this opportunity and I appreciate the work that, uh, Chad and his team have, have done to, to really kind of guide us through this process and also, uh, the connections he's made with us and, and other events in the, in the park. Uh, we have approached Island City and I appreciate, uh, Councilman Rapinski's questions. He did contact me earlier today and I was able to answer those questions for him directly. Um, I did have conversations with Douglas Irwin and, uh, um, early on before we even began to think about this project. Um, because we did know that they do outdoor performances during the summer. He expressed great support for this endeavor and said that because of the timing, we're looking at performances happening between six and nine P M. That, uh, that he would have live bands playing before the show to entertain the crowds that were gathering in the park. He would have a food truck out front on select nights, um, in his property as well to help service them. And, uh, and then he would do a quiet period between six and nine and then start the live performances up again at nine o'clock. And he thought that that would not be a hindrance, but actually an enhancement to his business. Um, we have not talked to other adjacent businesses because we were waiting for city council approval before we started to publicly speak uh, to businesses in the area about what was actually happening. So, uh, I, I did not reach out directly to, uh, Councilman Rapinski, who, whose businesses use, uses that lot for parking for their patrons. So, um, that would happen, you know, after the fact, but we are happy to work with any business that might, uh, be affected. Um, to reserve spots for their customers to make sure that we have designated spots. Uh, so that the general public that are coming to the performances don't park in spots that might be used by another business. So we're happy to work with any business on that front. Um, the other question, I can't remember what it was. Oh, about the use of Winona State University. We are aware that the governor has opened up capacity in performances. Um, I have been in touch with Winona State and they have not received any direct guidance about what, how many people they would allow in. And they also expressed concerns about the governor's concerns about a fourth wave of COVID coming. And, uh, and if we were to plan to be indoors, um, we might have to at the last minute change and go outdoors again. So we know that we can plan, how we can plan to do an outdoor, uh, an outdoor festival. We don't know how to be able to accurately plan for an indoor festival. So this is our, our best approach for the summer.
Thank you, Aaron. Chad, do you have something else?
Um, Mayor and Council, I think the other question was, uh, impact with Steamboat Days. So I've talked to two of the members of Steamboat Days Committee. Shakespeare Festival is planning not to start any, um, public performances until after Steamboat Days. Uh, we've asked a member of the Steamboat Days Committee if it was okay if Shakespeare did the setup portion. So that they're, you know, when they start building the stage and starting getting ready. Uh, the response I received from, uh, that committee member was this specific area is not part of plans for Steamboat Days this year. And so they thought the two could work, um, together. I think that Shakespeare Festival likely would encourage people also to park behind the movie theater lot. I think there's a difference between using the parking lot and like use of the parking lot, if that makes sense for the summer. Um, if not, certainly, uh, parking within, uh, Main Street is limited and certainly Cal Fremling. Um, I guess the other comment I would make is if we feel, um, that the uh, southern portion of Lot Nine is, is certainly too much to give in the license agreement, we can certainly amend it. I mean, that we certainly have the right to do that.
And may, may I add one more thing on that?
Go ahead. Please, Aaron. Yep.
Thanks. Um, just that, uh, we do a brochure every year that goes around to the community as well as to people that are traveling up and down the river. And we will promote in there. Um, we always promote where people can park. And we can promote that they can park in multiple places throughout the city. Uh, our anticipation is that people will come and eat at a restaurant before or pick up a takeout meal and bring it into the park. And so it's likely that they might park in the diet, the, the lot kitty corner from Blooming Grounds. Or they might, might park by Nosh and then walk into the park. So, uh, we, we will do, uh, everything that we can to promote a diversity of parking options. Uh, rather than trying to indicate that this is the lot that everyone needs to park.
City Manager Steve Starby has a question.
Aaron, if this, if this goes forward, um, you might want to mention to folks who have limited mobility that they should park in that Lot Nine, the Godfather, the old Godfather's Lot.
That they might park in that lot or not?
They should because, they should because otherwise trying to get over the train tracks is problematic.
Yeah. And Mayor Aaron here, um, maybe even designate half a dozen spaces for them or something.
Good idea.
Absolutely. That is a common occurrence for us. So thank you.
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
I'm sure, uh, Mr. Young, that, uh, if Merchant's Bank was approached, I know during Steamboat Days, all their lots are filled with vehicles for people that are attending Steamboat Days. And I'm sure, not speaking on behalf of the bank, I mean, I'm a customer there, but, uh, I'm sure that they would certainly open up their lot for, uh, parking as well too, providing that their bank is closed during that time. So.
Thank you. That's great. And, and given that they have decided to be our season sponsor, I think that that might be a very easy ask.
Don't care your parking problem.
Uh, Chad had something else?
Uh, Mayor and Council did also want to mention, cause, uh, Councilman Rapinski brings up another good point. Um, we have allowed through the license agreement to honor Shakespeare's request of no amplified events uh, during their performances. However, the park will be open. Um, and we've talked through that with Great River Shakespeare Festival. We, we are first warm season with the boulders down Levy Park. Um, of course, obviously the other components of Levy Park. So the park is gonna be open. It, it, it's certainly that their performance will be going on as well. But, uh, hopefully maybe there'll be some, even some crossover traffic.
So Mayor, am, am I correct in saying then, as far as like live music on the levy for the two plus months, we're not gonna have live music on a Friday and Saturday evening at the levy anymore then? It's just gonna be Shakespeare stuff?
Uh, so Mayor and Council, at, at this point, no. Uh, we did hold out July fourth. Um, again, waiting for some of the COVID guidelines to come, come to light. Um, but we certainly have discussed with Shakespeare about a city holding and reserving July fourth for a potential Live at the Levy, uh, event.
Okay, I'm just looking at the schedule here and, and that's about the only significant day that's held. Otherwise, we're looking at Fridays and Saturdays. And Sundays. We would not have live music on the levy. I just wanna make sure that's, that I'm correct. I'm looking at that correctly.
Yeah, I think that's the key component because on some of those Saturdays as well, the Shakespeare Festival has performances from, example, you know, July tenth is eleven A M. to two P M. So we potentially could have an event that Saturday evening.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that, Aaron and Chad. Thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilman Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Abstain.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Worsakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi. Motion passes.
Item three point eight is a proposal for a downtown parquet.
I'm Michelle Alexander. Would move approval of that request.
Eileen will second that.
We have a motion from Michelle, a second from Eileen. Any discussion?
Mayor, Michelle Alexander.
Go ahead, Michelle.
I'm just wondering if we're going to develop some type of city policy. So I personally don't have a problem with it. I'm not sure if I'd classified as a parquet from my understanding of a parquet. But I don't have a problem with it. But I did get complaints last time from people that can't, when they're, once they get in the car, they couldn't see to back up very well or pull in and they worried about hitting the cement. And then I, I got complaints from other people who want to know for their business, can they put stuff out in the street? And so I'm just, this has nothing specifically to do with her request necessarily. But I'm wondering if we have developed a policy to determine when we would allow these to occur, where we would allow them to occur. And, and like what kind of policies we might have in place for insurance or size or what could be located in a parquet. Cause I can imagine there's some businesses that are on a corner stop straight street that might not object to having access to something outside. So just my request, um, as part of this is that we come back with something for us to approve, much like we did with the, um, the food carts. Cause I, I have concerns that we might see these cropping up with or without approval. Um, if we continue doing this every year, that, that's all I have.
Thank you, Michelle.
Mayor, this is Pam. I have a question.
Go ahead, Pam.
I, uh, down at the bottom paragraph of this item, uh, it's referred to as a semi-permanent installation. What is that? What does that mean? Semi-permanent? When, what is the duration of this parquet?
Steve, do you wanna speak to that or maybe Brian?
I don't think Brian, uh, if, I don't know if Luke is on, but my understanding is it's semi-permanent in that it's gonna, it'll go in, uh, this spring and it'll be taken out in the fall. And that, uh, some of the equipment that they put out there, they bring inside every night.
Okay. Uh, Mayor, can I actually speak to that question?
Hi, Jovi. Yes.
Hi.
Please.
Yes, so semi-permanent, um, that is correct. It would go out in the spring. It would come back in, in, uh, the fall. So I'm looking at, uh, May through October. And, um, but it would not be something that would be pulled in. They are too heavy to be pull, broken down every, on a daily basis. So it would be just similar to what happened in twenty nineteen, um, with a little bit of some, uh, rearranging so that there isn't seating next to traffic. Um, and also I plan to put, I forgot to put this in the plan, but reflectors so that people can also see in the evenings and hopefully that gives a little bit more visual sense when people are parking.
Thank you, Jovi. Any other questions or discussion?
Uh, Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
I know, uh, you know, there's some, uh, you know, some of that parquet there before, which I don't think we as a council approve. So what I'm glad to see is that we are approving this, uh, for the first time.
It was actually approved through the Artist on Main Street, uh, program. That's what in the initial project came through. So those were in a collective approval from council.
Okay.
Thank you, Jovi. Uh, I just wanna comment real quick. I've seen the success of a semi-permanent parquet and how it turns into a more permanent fixture in La Crosse. I think, uh, if you've been in downtown La Crosse in the past few years, it's a great example. I love these things. I think they're awesome. Um, it is a great way to build community. It's a great way to, um, help enhance the downtown area. Um, and, and Jovi, also you have a, a little extra piece to this parquet. Can you speak to that real quick?
As far as the signage, that'll be included.
Yep.
Um, yeah, I just wanted to, um, kinda speak to what it is. So that was kind of was the same theme that happened during the Artist on Main Street project. It was, um, called Third Spaces. And so this is like a third space, a place that you would gather. And so I wanted to still kind of keep that, um, sense going. And so, um, basically it's worded that the space is intended as a place to gather, to build community. Um, and also, um, have a, uh, land acknowledgement there, um, that, that we are on Dakota land. Um, cause I think that that is important. So.
Very good. Thank you, Jovi. Any other questions or comments?
Um, Mayor, I have one question. Is this, this doesn't go onto the street, does it? Is this just on the sidewalk or is this protrude out into the parking spaces?
It's an extension of the sidewalk essentially out into the street. So it kinda looks like a bump out, a little larger than a bump out, I would say.
Okay. And insurance-wise, we're okay with everything?
Yep, we've done them in the past and, uh, they seem to be pretty well received, I think. So. Thank you.
Eileen here.
Go ahead, Eileen.
Um, I just also wanted to speak to the fact that this, um, project, uh, as far as I could tell last time was extremely successful. Um, my, uh, the, the Shakespeare Festival office is not too far from where this happened. And so I was able to see it every day during the summer when it was up. And there were always people sitting and chatting and it really did serve the purpose of being a wonderful community gathering space. And I think projects, projects like this, especially in, um, our downtown area where, where, um, especially during warm weather, people are walking and gathering. And as we start being able to gather together again, to be able to do it outdoors, I think is fantastic. And so I'm excited that this will be out there again. Um, and if I'm, uh, remembering correctly, because of the position, it, it doesn't take up really too much of parking space. Um, so it's, it's a great little project and I think that, um, it's a really cool new way to think about, um, artistic endeavors in our community.
Thank you, Eileen.
Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
Yep, you know, I, I thought through the safety aspect of it as well. Really, it's just a parked car, same dimensions as a, as a, uh, a parking spot. I was thinking about, uh, safety of bicyclists coming down there. It, it's the same as having a car parked, parked on the side of the road. So, uh, I, I certainly was thinking about that. I read, read through the proposal a couple of times and I, I don't, I don't see an issue with it. So.
Very good. Thanks. Thanks, Steve. Anyone else care to comment? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilman Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Worsakowski. Worsakowski.
Hi.
And Rapinski.
Hi. Motion almost passes. You know, it passed.
Item three point nine is a request to hold a parade by the Lake Winona Manor on June fifteen.
George moves to approve that request.
Aaron would second that. We have a motion from George, a second from Aaron. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilman Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Worsakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item three point ten is the resolution of support for the second daily train.
Hi, Steve Young moved that we support this attached res- resolution showing the city support for the second daily train.
Eileen will second that.
We have a motion from Steve and a second from Eileen. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, if I could.
Go ahead, Steve.
Yes, so, so as uh amazing as it sounds, we have an opportunity to have a second daily Amtrak train from, from Chicago to the Twin Cities. Uh each day, so people could actually operate round trip between those cities and, and all points in between. Beyond the, the second daily train, it's an infrastructure upgrade. It is, this is a, a, a once in a generation opportunity to have uh incredible uh dollars invested. We're asking the state of Minnesota for ten million dollars. The, the, the feds are, are on, the federal government is already on board. State of Wisconsin is on board with their money and we're, we're simply waiting for Minnesota. Uh we've been close before, but we're, we appear to be quite close this time to having Minnesota pledge their, their ten million dollars. Uh if that happens, there would be millions of dollars, actually a nineteen million dollars worth of rail upgrades in Winona alone, just with the ten million dollars in capital money from the state of Minnesota, plus another twenty million dollars down in La Crosse. This is incredible. It, it would actually help reduce some of the waiting times in, in choke points like Mankato. It's a safety thing. Um thi- this is a big deal. So very excited and hope that we can pass this resolution. So, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
First of all, uh I want to say thank you to Steve Young for taking this endeavor on, uh accepting the appointment to this committee. I also want to thank uh Senator Jeremy Miller for his support for this, uh for the second train. And also want to thank uh former council member Paul Scholmeyer for his work on this. I believe he worked on it for two years, three years, but I feel pretty good about this. Uh the infrastructure is going to be a big, big plus uh for Winona and uh I think uh we are on the right track with this now. So, thank you to all.
Thank you, George. Go ahead, Pam. Go ahead.
I have another comment. If, uh I think Mayor Miller might like to hear from others in the community that are in favor of this second train. I think it's, would be an important for anybody in the community that really enjoys this possibility of the investment in our local community and a second train to get in touch with Mayor Miller and tell him so.
Senator Miller, correct?
Mr. Mayor, if I could, if I could just kind of piggyback on that.
Go ahead.
And really, it is, it is to thank Senator Miller for his support. He is a supporter. Uh he's a co-sponsor of this bill in the Senate to advance this. So contacting him, great and, and thanking him for his support. So, thank you.
Very good. Thanks. Anyone else have anything to say on this one?
Uh Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Just like to say also, uh thank you for her time, Leon Macheski on this project as well. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks, George. Any other comments, discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Worsakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Under new business, item five point one is the fill facilities plan for the wastewater treatment plant.
I would approve the attached resolution for the work at the facilities, for, for, for the facilities plan at the wastewater treatment plant.
I, Pam would second that.
We have a motion from George, a second by Pam. Any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, do we have, do we have Brian on the line for questions? Okay.
Brian DeFrang, are you available?
Yeah, I'm here.
Great. Go ahead, Steve.
Brian, thank you for joining us. If, if I could, uh just, just get a little clarity. So this, this is a study to know what we need to do so that we can comply with the twenty twenty eight uh phosphorus rules. Is that, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, i- it's an overall study of the wastewater treatment plant facility which will also address the phosphorus mandate that we uh have to comply with.
So it's beyond just the, the phosphorus mandate?
Yep, yep. It's an overall facilities, you know, thing was built in the early eighties and it's uh well past uh time to do something like this.
Okay, so are we doing anything? Is there, are there, are there, are there other studies or, or, or other ways? Obviously, we, we have phosphorus that runs into our watershed. But most of that, I'm, I'm thinking is not from the city Winona. It, it comes from outside the city Winona, mostly agricultural, of course. So are, are, are there things we can do to mitigate that? So we're not have to, having to spend the tremendous amount of dollars that I think are going to be projected to spend this uh to, to spend on, on this mitigation plan. What, what are we doing to reduce those levels coming into the city?
Uh you make point, Steve, but uh that is totally irrelevant to the wastewater treatment plant. The wastewater treatment plant mandate is totally on the effluent that comes from the plant. It has nothing to do with whether a farmer's puts anything into the river or anything like that. We have a mandate that on our effluent and you know, they're not putting that in our sewer system.
Okay, thank you.
Strictly in our sewer system.
If, if I don't know, I gotta ask, but okay, I'm getting it. What, what's the primary source of that then?
Uh fecal matter.
It's, it's waste. Okay, okay. Thank you. That's, that's, that's that. Okay, just, just learning basic things. That's good. Thank you.
Any other comments or discussion?
Just that I love anytime we can talk about poo. So thank you.
Mayor, this is Pam. I do have a question for Brian and also a comment.
Go ahead, Pam.
Yes, uh the Healthy Lake Winona Group has been looking at phosphorus in Lake Winona for a number of years and and we've found that a lot of the phosphorus in Lake Winona is legacy phosphorus. In other words, it's been there. Come down from the watershed for a long time and it's just a legacy. But we as, as residents can do our part by not putting leaves and other organic debris in the, in the gutters so that it ends up in the storm sewers. So it ends up in the lake and therefore in the wastewater treatment plant. So um that's all I wanted to say, that we can do something on our own to mitigate the, the effects and also the expense. I believe, right, Brian?
Uh, and you're, you're correct on the lake. But as far as any of that stuff getting in our wastewater treatment plant, unless you're putting it down your drain, it doesn't go to our plant. Those, those things are very, very, very correct with the lake, but not a and I definitely agree, we shouldn't put li- leaves down storms or stuff like that, but uh that, that's not exactly what we're talking about right now with the, with the treatment plant.
Okay. And this leads me to another question. Um I understand that the, that there are, that there are regulations and there are limits in the amount that we can that we can handle through the lake as well. Are we going to be up against limits in that, that level of phosphorus or phosphorus from that source as well?
Uh like, like you said, the, the sources for the lake come from lawn clippings, uh pet waste, leaves, et cetera. And uh, yeah, we have, we have that study that says possibly putting a pre-treatment pond with alum which helps drop the phosphorus out. Um dredging was another possibility. We haven't totally addressed that one yet, but um I guess that's not what's on the agenda at this point.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, Brian, can you tell me, does much of this waste come from industry or is it mostly uh human, uh residential?
Uh, all sources.
Any other questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Worsakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item five point two is the financial planning model.
George soul moves approval of the proposal to develop a financial planning model.
And Eileen will second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Eileen? Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Worsakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item five point three is the grant agreement with the Minnesota State Arts Board for the Drive-In Series.
George will motion to approve the attached resolution.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Eileen. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Worsakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item five point four is the Friendship Center grant request for the Live Well at Home Grant.
George will motion to allow staff to submit to grant application to the Minnesota Department of Human Services.
Eileen will second that.
We have a motion from George, a second from Eileen. Any discussion?
Mayor, could uh Chad just touch on this a little bit?
I'm sure he'd be happy to.
Uh Mayor and Council, Malia Fox from the Friendship Center is online with us. I'd like to defer to her.
Great. Malia?
Good evening, Council. Um this Live Well at Home Grant, we currently are operating a chore program. Some of you might be aware of it. Spring cleanups, snow shoveling. Basic chores for persons sixty and older in the community. This Live Well at Home Grant would expand to more homemaking services. And we have been speaking with our fire department and asking them about the number of falls that occur, how often they are called out just to assist people for falling. And the number, um I don't have it at this time, but I know speaking to the chief, they're significant. We would like to attempt to get grant money to help us with a referral system so that people are calling back, calling back, calling back to our fire department. That we would be in the referral process back to our senior advocates. And with this wonderful program that the Friendship Center just received an award for through Winona State University Bridges. We would enlist bridges in helping people in their home with things such as exercises. You know that we've been doing teleconferencing since twenty twelve. All of those exercise programs would be available for people in this Live Well at Home program. So we just want to reach out to the Minnesota Department of Human Services for grant dollars that could assist us in this type of program.
Very good. Thanks, Malia. Anybody else have questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young.
Hi.
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 Yes, I. Worsakowski.
Hi.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item five point five is the Friendship Center air conditioning repair.
Monica, I think your microphone might be off.
Item five point five is the Friendship Center air conditioning repair.
Eileen will make a motion to approve the facility funds transfer.
Second. We have a motion from Eileen, a second from Steve. Any discussion? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young. Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
Hi.
Aiden.
Hi.
Worsakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item five point six is the West Lake Winona curly leaf pond weed treatment.
Eileen will make a motion to approve, accepting the grant and proceed with the treatment.
Aaron will second that.
We have a motion from Eileen, a second from Aaron. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor George here is John Howard on the line.
Uh yes, sir. I'm here.
Yeah, hi, John. Again, hello, John. Say, uh now is this in, involved as well too, as far as carp control goes? I know we talked last year about uh getting the carp out of there. Is that part of this as well too, or are the two connected at all?
Uh this grant and the curly leaf pond weed uh is, is more really to control the, the weeds and, and really make the, the lake more, more usable um and, and more friendly to, to native, to native plants. There is some, uh some benefit to carp control and that carp do lay their eggs in the curly leaf pond weed, or can be somewhat sheltered by them. And so they might be more su- subject to predation. So the population might not uh have, have as great of, of hatching and, and and, and for future years, but um principally, this is, this is just for the weed control.
Okay, are we still looking at doing uh carp control yet?
Uh yes, uh we, um I've been hoping to get a proposal from uh Saint Mary's University. There's a professor, a fisheries biologist there who's been expressed interest in working with uh the city, some of her students to the study of the carp population. Uh and once we get that number, and those numbers, I think we'll be able to bring in some commercial fishermen or interest them uh to come in and, and really uh help control our, and, and, and potentially remove you know, the great vast majority of our carp. So that, that's still, that's still in the works and something we'd, I'd love to see happen.
And don't the carp as well eat a lot of the weeds on the bottom?
They, they can. I mean, they're, they're not going to be, from my understanding is they're not going to be digging up kind of the, the full curly leaf plants. They might dig, dig up some of them. Um and they might eat some of the, some of the stuff that breaks off, but uh they're not going to do a whole lot to control the weeds, at least the species of carp. There are some carp, I think, grass carp, which is another invasive species that mayor, that may eventually get to Winona. They actually do eat curly leaf pond weed. That's one of their preferred foods, but the common carp, the one that we have a lot of, uh they're less, less helpful.
Yeah, I, I hate to make this investment and then if the carp are going to eat it, uh we gain absolutely nothing by not removing the carp, so. Thank you.
Thanks, George. Any other comments or discussion? John, I have a quick question. The, the primary weed that we think of, is this the, is this the one? Is this the one that we're thinking of in the lake? Specifically my five hundred tri-nona swimmers every June?
Yes, uh this, this is the, the most common, uh common weed in the lake, in both lakes. Uh and it's very prevalent early in the season, yeah, June. June is when it's can full, full swing. It, it its leaves kind of look like little skinny pieces of bacon, maybe, very small, kind of wavy. Like a lasagna noodle type thing, but you know, two or three inches long.
Great, thanks. John, again, showing your expertise tonight. Very good. Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Hi.
Councilmember Young.
Hi.
Muller.
Hi.
Alexander.
I vote I to getting rid of the lasagna weed.
Aiden.
Hi.
Worsakowski.
Hi.
Rapinski.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Item five point seven is the Community Forestry Core Program.
I would motion authorizing I would motion authorizing staff to apply to be a DFC host site.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Eileen. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor George here.
Go ahead, George.
Uh, would this person be working with uh, Howard Krueger's group in regards to the trees? Does that have any connection there?
Uh, Mayor and Council, they certainly, they certainly could. Um, they uh, it uh, they would, they would certainly, they're, one of their primary goals would be tree planting, and uh, I, they, uh, they are uh, they're, they're here, they would be here to serve the community, and that's certainly one, one group and one aspect of it. So I would expect they would work with with Mr. Krueger and the the friends in Winona Parks.
Okay, and we have no salary responsibility for this person?
Uh, correct. Uh, our, our responsibilities are to provide staff supervision, uh, so mostly my time, some of the city foresters' time. Uh, there are some, some trainings um, that we would, you know, you know, pay for, for the person to attend and 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 maybe some equipment um, kind of incidental, you know, relatively small purchases. Uh, so our, our financial investment, I would, I would foresee being uh, you know, under, under a thousand dollars um, for this person to to work for us for eleven months. And uh, the the application would probably be for the halftime, the twenty-five hours per, per, per week option.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander.
Aye.
Ayden. Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye. Motion passes.
Item seven point one is council concerns.
Tonight, we'll start with Councilmember Borzakowski.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. Uh, any update on the Hamilton Street Railroad crossing? Steve or whoever wants to just.
I haven't heard, uh, Mayor and Council, I haven't heard anything. I don't know if Brian has, uh, although to note that in the, in the package for the second train is to upgrade all of the crossings to the community.
Okay.
I have contacted them. Uh, it's nothing, nothing definitive at this point.
Okay.
Mike did do some patching down there, but it's uh, still the wooden crossing that's more the problem than anything.
Okay, but we'll be, but we'll be keeping an eye on it.
Yep.
And I just want to just, just take a, a short moment here just to point out, uh, you know, to our community development department, uh, Lucy McMartin and and her staff, as you look around our city right now, uh, you see a lot of development. You know, you see bulldozers, you see backhoes, you see cranes. And that's all due to a good community development program. You see Fastenal coming onboard, Windcraft's going to come onboard. Quick Trip is going to be expanding their operation out on Highway uh, forty-three and County Road seventeen. And just like I say, uh, thanks to our planning commission, and thanks to city councils in the past, and this city council right now for as new as we are, or you know, that we all, all together here, we have a lot to do with all this. And I think we can be proud of all the development that's taking part in the city at this time. With that, thank you.
Thank you, George. Councilmember Alexander. Michelle, do you have anything? Councilmember Ayden?
Nothing for me tonight.
Very good. Thanks, Pam. Okay. Councilmember Muller.
Um, just want to reiterate, thanks to the firefighters who have been working to get everyone vaccinated. I think by now, everyone who wants to get one can, uh, so I highly encourage people to do it. It's not, it's not bad at all. And um, yes, we've all been very chatty tonight, so that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Eileen. Councilmember Young.
No, thanks. I'm good. Speak only if you can improve the silence, so I'm going to pass.
Councilmember Rapinski.
Uh, just one thing tonight, Mayor. Um, had two different citizens brought to my attention. Um, excessive noise via motorcycles and uh, big trucks was, was one of their, their verbatim, um, along Huff Street and Broadway. Had asked if the city could instruct the police to keep a better eye on that is all. So that, that's all I have for tonight is that we just want to keep a watchful eye on that.
Absolutely. Okay. Thanks, Aaron.
Under the consent agenda, there are three items: approval of the minutes from March fifteenth, the final adoption of an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code, and one claim against the city by Vic Nolan.
George moves to approve the consent agenda.
Eileen will second.
We have a motion from George, a second from Eileen? We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander. Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye. Motion passes.
Mayor, I make a motion. We adjourn.
Eileen seconds.
Motion from George, second from Eileen. We'll vote by roll call.
Mayor Sherman.
Aye.
Councilmember Young.
Aye.
Muller.
Aye.
Alexander. Ayden.
Aye.
Borzakowski.
Aye.
Rapinski.
Aye. Meeting adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Bye.